If the community resources don't exist, then it's kind of hard to say, you know, we feel good about putting you into the hands of someone else. The good news is for us here in Sioux Falls, we have probably some of the best resources anywhere, which is awesome. And the fact that they're expanding is great, too. But it's, you know, districts all around us, too, that push on those resources because, you know, some of the needs. There's also telehealth options that never used to exist and the importance of our mentoring programs that have had to get pulled back this year because of COVID. We're going to see an effect of that because I think we've even just experienced it, those of us who have mentored, the disconnect even this year of not being able to fully engage with those kids that have been part of our lives. That's everywhere. So I think this is a big topic, and it sounds like one that's got, you know, tentacles into lots of areas. And I think it deserves some really good discussion that will help inform us what's really relevant and real right now. Anything else with this list? Otherwise, I'm going to move on to the next slide. We're already over an hour in, which I knew. This would feel like kind of warp speed once we got going. Okay, so the next area that we've already talked about with the current plan as well as moving forward, and to me, some of this is our internal work, our priorities as an organization, but we also just need to think about, is this anything that we want to say is a district priority? It's all of those things around employee retention, the diversity of our staff that's reflective of our student population, the professional learning that we offer, and we've already been talking about some different platforms, maybe, for how we make that visible, how we help people choose what's required, what's really necessary for a particular initiative, and then what's nice to, or what are people just interested in doing to feed them as professionals? And then the recognition factor. We have some things right now that we do, but that's probably an area that we could do more. And then just innovation. What can we have our staff help us with problem solving? And there's some models that I like, that I hope we can put into place next year of saying, okay, you've been in our district, what do you observe is an area that we need to improve, and what's your idea? Pitch your idea. And each year, taking on some of those staff-initiated projects where they've got some ideas of how to make something better or an innovation, and we take those. So over the course of time, we say, look at how we're better as an organization because of the input and the great problem-solving skills of our staff. All of that then cycles back into retention. People want their efforts noticed. That helps us collectively pay attention to things that we need to in our district and just lots of benefits. Becky Dorman and I, darn it, I was pointing again and I clicked. Becky and I were talking yesterday in our one-on-one, just with how we welcome people to our district. And we had a new employee start here, and Dr. Knoll did a great job of taking her around and introducing her to everyone. I emailed her at the end of the day, and we talked about what are the intentional ways that we onboard staff? How do we introduce them to everyone? How do we make sure they feel connected quickly? And then how do we check in with them over time, whether you're working in nutrition services, or you're a teacher, or you're working on our grounds? How do we help you feel connected and part of the work that happens in our school district? So those are all the things that we're focusing on already. Is there anything that you would want to make sure that we highlight in addition to this or in other ways, just about employees?
You and I talked on Wednesday. You know, what we do at Avera is we, any new employee gets sort of a, not an evaluation, but sort of a check-in, like every month, and then again at six months, because they've been really working hard on retention. And well, I mean, with COVID, who knows what their rate is right now, but, you know, and we started doing this a couple of years ago. So, but I really like that idea of just that check-in and just say, how are you doing? Do you have everything you need? Are you feeling like you're supported? Da-da-da-da-da. But I, you know, obviously, retention of our teachers and other staff is really important. So just thinking that ways we can work on that.
I know one of the things I hear from people at times is regarding like professional learning and like the professional development days. And I think it would be great if we could find ways that, I know there's benefit and there's a need to have a topic that everybody has to go to. But what I hear from people is, I have to go to this, and it doesn't really apply to me. And so I wish that there were ways that we could maybe-
Differentiate.
Yeah, differentiate that more. And I know when my kids were in elementary school, I heard a lot of that from the Spanish immersion teachers, because they would go to these all-district things, and they're like, we can't do that. Like, we don't, we can't take the tools. I mean, they'd have to go back and translate. And some of the stuff, I'm sure they did. So I want to generalize that. But some of the tools were very, very specific, and they, there was no, nothing else for them to do. They were required to go to that, where they could have done something, maybe at a building level, that would have been more appropriate and more specific. Now, that's been several years since they've said that, so I'm sure that things have changed. But I just think about other populations of people, whether it's like, you know, Robert Frost and the gifted, or even at Eugene Field, that they do things in different ways. And so sometimes it's good for them to come, but sometimes maybe there are things that are more impactful, that it would make more sense for them to be able to be dismissed from something that was district-wide and have it be more specific to their teaching style, or their program, or whatever it might be. And so I don't know how that looks, and I know there are things that everybody has to get, so I understand that. But to the extent that we can differentiate some of that, I think, you know, and I'm looking at some of the survey questions that they had answered, you know, and it seems like they have been kind of going down as far as feeling like their professional development has benefited them. And so I think, how can we turn that around and give people the feeling that I didn't just have to go to this because I had to, but that I got to go to this, and this is what I took away from it? So-
Yep, that was relevant to me.
Yeah. I could go back the next day and try pieces of that right away with my class or whatever.
That must-do, need-to-do, and want-to-do, and then within that, the relevance factor.
Yeah.
We've also talked about, how do we come back around and show that visibly so that people can see what their progress has been over time? And we're looking at a couple of different platforms where teachers almost build a portfolio. And for some platforms, there's a micro-credential or a badging system that goes with that, so that others are able to recognize that as well. So it's not just you went and took it, and then five months later, there's no, you know, documentation or remembrance that that-
Or evidence that you've given.
-built additional skills for you. Yeah. And so some of those have been really effective in places in terms of recognition. And then when you go to work on a problem, or you go to work on a specific topic, you say, all right, let's go find those 10 teachers that have done some additional professional learning in this area, and bring them together around this behavior program that we're talking about, or whatever it might be. Then you begin to feed your organization a little bit more intentionally. So I think, you know, those things cost money, but that might be something that's money well-spent, too, if it can enhance some of the other needs that we have and really build the skills and retention at the same time.
And can we partner with some of our bargaining units, like SFA, to even pay for some of those things? Because if that's something they really want and think is good for their members, is it something we could partner with them to, for the additional cost? But the other thing I've heard on that professional development is maybe follow-ups. So like, we roll out a new program, or a new MAP testing, or whatever, and we go forward in a year and do it. Now, I learned it better, I have more follow-up questions, or I would like to go further with that and learn more ways to use this in my classroom. Should we do additional training past that after we've done it?
Yep. Okay, anything else in this area? Lots of good thoughts. I've got an F by things that are formality, so I'm making big Fs, not that I'm failing at my paperwork. Good. Okay, so then the next area is our community connections, and thinking about how we engage with the broader community. So I listed some things that we've been talking about, just additional partnerships or enhanced partnerships with business and industry. Higher ed, how do we, how do we hook on with as many higher ed partners as possible, whether it's dual credit, or program offerings, or just how we connect our courses with post-secondary opportunities, workforce development, all of those things? Parents as partners, how do we engage with them and make sure that we've got good mechanisms for how they're able to be involved with their child's learning, as well as with their schools in our district? And then community groups, how do we connect with them, maybe cultural groups that we haven't engaged with? Or the groups that support us philanthropically, or with mentoring programs. We've got a lot of really wonderful groups that support our students. And then the other engagement factor, and you know, this one's already underway, but we're going to need to be building it out as we put that in place, is our website, and really being able to have information on there in the way that we want it, and for the purposes that we need it, so that we have more visibility for what's being offered, and what our schools are able to communicate out, what departments can put on their sites as living pieces of information, and then interactive opportunities. We've got K-12 Insight, we've got the Remind app this year that's still kind of taking shape. We've got School-Age. And so what are the interactive pieces? You've heard me say we're rethinking about surveys next year. How do we ask better questions more frequently, and have time to respond and react to those? I think that all fits in with this. What else would you be thinking about, just with our ability to connect with the community as priorities?
I wrote a couple of things down. One in regard to surveys was, and I have felt this for a while, but, you know, we get these surveys, and it says, it tells, asks you the questions of, stay asking if you perceive your teachers hold students to high expectations. And then the other one, just off the top of this, is a, they feel informed about what's happening in their student's school. And I think one of the challenges with that is that, as a parent, I get one survey, but I have kids in two and three different schools. I might feel differently about one school than the other, but I, there's no way for me to tell you that. And so how can we, if we're actually going to ask the questions, how can we make it so that students or that parents have the option to actually answer that, so that we get feedback and data that's meaningful? And so I've felt that way for the last couple of years, and we get that. It's like, well, I don't know, do you want me to just tell you everything I like, or do you want me to tell you where you need improvement? You know what I mean? Like, what do you want to hear from me? And so I don't know what we've gained from the feedback in the past. And then this one might be kind of cheesy, but I just feel like, from a, I feel like when you're in elementary school, more so, it's probably the highest, you're really engaged as a parent. There's lots of opportunities to get on a normal year in your child's classroom. They might have parties, there's pictures, there's all these things. And then your kid goes to middle school, and I think parents become less engaged, which is probably normal. Your kids are getting older, they don't need you as much-
And they don't want to be seen with you.
You know, yeah. But I think those are super important years, and I, a lot of times, don't know. I mean, I get the newsletter, and that's great, that's one time a month. But how else can we tell people? And like George McGovern does an awesome job on their Facebook page. I don't know if Richie Hutchinson runs it, but he does, whoever does, he does a really good job. And sometimes they're doing the same things as they are at Edison, and I didn't even know, because I asked, I'll ask my middle schooler and say, did you know? Oh, yeah, we did that, too. And I'm like, I had no idea. And so I'm a person who loves to see pictures of kids, whether it's my kid or not, doing things and having fun. And like yesterday, they had the-
That ignored.
Yeah, and I was like, this is so cool! And I'd never heard about it, and Cameron was telling you all about it on the way to school. And then I looked online, and there were all these pictures from George McGovern, but no sign of life. You know? And so I know that that's work, and that's time, and that's like somebody's job, but I just feel like you could really engage parents more in the activities of what's going on at school, if they had a visual. They're not, like, my husband did go and have lunch with my seventh grader one time, but that was the last time. You know? So that's not going to happen, where they do come to elementary school, and then you can kind of meet their friends, and you can see what's going on. But parents just aren't in middle schools, and they're not in high schools. And so I don't know what that looks like, if it's Facebook page, or, I don't know. But I just feel like ways to engage parents in the community would be huge, just in having them know how awesome that program is. That I said to Cameron, have you done this every year? No, this is the first year. And I was like, where's the, like, hoopla about what an awesome thing this is that we've never done before?
And what's different because of COVID this year. But we just, I had this conversation the other day with Deanna around Facebook and just social media. I think the bigger picture is, what does our new website allow for us to enhance for some of those other things right now? I don't think we have the capability that we want for subscribing to some things and getting a feed. Some things I think you can, and other things, it's cumbersome, or if you have multi schools, does the feed work really well? And we've also got the issue of things living in too many places right now. So we've got some things living in Google, some things living on our district website, some things living in Facebook. And so that's, again, I think, a multi-year project for streamlining and making sure we have systems to support how we push things out, as well as when we go to engage around asking questions, what's the funnel for that coming in and out, so that we can then post it on Facebook and say, here's what you told us, and here's what, here's what's happening. So those are really good points.
And I think they do a great job on the school district website. I think there's, I love the variety. It's elementary, it's middle, it's high school, it's sports, it's band, it's, I mean, they do a really good job of that.
Partnerships.
Yes, I mean, I love that. But sometimes you want to know specifically about your own child's school and what's going on. And I was thinking about this before, and I'm like, oh, it must be such a pain, because you have to figure out who can be in pictures and who can't be in pictures. I mean, there's a whole, I get, there's a whole dynamic to that, and so it isn't overnight, you're going to call Mr. Hieronymus and tell him to get on Facebook. Like, that's not, that's not the ask. I just think that there's, there's a way to engage people, and I don't know what that looks like, but I think it could be done better.
Some of that has, you know, traditionally been, as social media has evolved in that school realm, it's been person-specific. And so part of it is, what's the system? Who's really responsible in every building? Because we may all be school secretaries, or we may all be APs in a building, but we may have very different levels of comfort with the responsibility of what gets pushed out, or how much we've empowered people and trained people to say, here's what we want for sure pushed out, and here's what you building can decide if you do or don't. And then sometimes people who got trained and were the ones to do that leave, and the person who replaces them, that's not their thing. So some of this comes back to, as most things do, systems for how we do that.
And there's always the risk that somebody is going to post something that they thought was funny, or, you know what I mean?
I do know what you mean.
And so I, yeah, I understand. Yeah, I understand all those challenges. So I, when I give my feedback, I understand that piece of it, too, because that, who you put at the helm of that can make a big difference. Is it somebody that's going to be engaging, or is it somebody who's going to write it all lowercase letters with no exclamation? You know what I mean?
Yes.
Or no comments, and just, we're just going to post a bunch, you know? So-
I think our forums will help, too. One of the things, I don't know what you've done most recently in Sioux Falls, is really asking parents, where do you primarily get your information? What's the biggest place that you go to first? Is it Twitter? Is it Facebook? Is it some other platform? Is it Instagram? Is it our webpages? Is it your friend's rogue group that they've made for, you know, whatever? Not that that exists, but- I mean, where do people go for information? And then how do we make sure if they're going to the wrong place, or not our ideal place, why is that? Is it because they haven't gotten what they want there, or what they need? And so then there's kind of been another remedy for it. Have we equipped school people to say, this is where we want your information to live? Or have they had to go find that themselves? And then what do we have as new opportunities, I think, that we really want to get right at implementation with a new website, and really point people in very purposeful ways to go get that information? Good. Okay, well, let's move on, and then I think we'll want to take a little bit of a break here in a few minutes. These are the things that you kind of had compiled for our first retreat last summer. Or they're things that you've talked about as we've had our one-on-ones, or they've come up from board meetings, or whatever. I kind of just tried to put a list on here. And then I have one more slide with this that was a few of the things that I noted in the current plan that were termed a study, that we would want to say, yes, we've already talked about that, or no, this needs to find its way in somewhere, or it's done and over. So I think a lot of these things, we've already covered. One of the areas that we might want to consider that I didn't have a specific slide for was things that fall under facilities and finance. And we've talked about that individually, is what do we want to think about related to future enrollment growth, new and rebuilt facilities? I know Jeff Kreider has a good comprehensive plan, but is it time as a board to kind of go back and re-envision anything? What do we want to look at for land and property acquisition? And then site planning. If we have property we already own, or things that have already been put in motion, do we still feel the same way about what had been envisioned for that site? Or have some other variables changed? Do we just need to spend some purposeful time over the next year or two, visioning what that might look like? And then I added what I had mentioned earlier, just about new possibilities. What do we want to envision that's just, you know, brand-new, that we think it's really time to kind of think new? So those are some things that I've heard from all of you. Are we missing something? Is there something I should add or take away?
I think it encompasses everything I discussed with you, so I appreciate your efforts in listening to all of us and including me.
There's nothing I talked about, okay?
Yours is on another list.
You have your own slide.
Yeah.
We'll give you a separate slide, Todd.
Little pictures.
I think, you know-
We'll edit that part.
Through the lens is, out of these things, as we listen and as we move forward, what from this list finds its way into a district priority, and what's already taken care of in some other way as we move forward. And, you know, what I don't want to do, that we've already talked about, is lock into a three-year this. There may be things on here that, over the next year, are a priority, and then we re-evaluate, we pull something else in, or we let it go off. And so I think you can think about, you know, over the next year from this, is there anything on here that we would want to put into a forum that says, do we need to listen differently around this? Or do we need to make this its own priority for a year, or two, or three, to get us the next leg of the journey in the district? So I think we can keep this list, and we can kind of work from this and blend into forum questions that we'll get to in a little bit, or probably have to do separate from today, depending on the model that we use. This was the study list, and I think I got them all. If I didn't, we can assume it. Some said evaluate, or other terms, but these are the ones. So we've already kind of talked about MTSS, encompassing those interventions that would address, the first one about struggling readers and interventions, middle and high school. Some of that's our internal work, some of that we've already identified as a need. Same thing with junior kindergarten, and that's slowly, you know, kind of come into being, but is that part of a larger, comprehensive push to really expand early learning opportunities? And then our quandary is going to be, next year, what does that look like with available space? We don't know what some holding out from kindergarten this year means for next year. What is the state going to do? Is there going to be any type of renewed interest? And we're talking about some, just beginning things that we've heard wind of, or that might be something we want to propose legislatively. If we really want to push on the state for additional funding for early childhood, you know, those are all questions. Two-way immersion came within the language piece, and then computer science, we also talked about, and not necessarily taking off yet with something, is that a priority? Yeah.
The one that, and maybe it's not here, so correct me, but studying Native American graduation, would that be the one that I would be interested in adding?
To me, that fits within that whole MTSS framework. But it's that blended with culturally responsive practices, with additional supports, and in those anchor metrics, we would be capturing that when we disaggregate that graduation data. But maybe it makes its way in after we, after we listen in our forums to say, a real priority is going to be kind of this comprehensive look at some of our highest needs groups, and what are we doing for social-emotional support, for well-being, for family connection, and for academic connections? And we're really going to target a framework that we look at, or a model that we've seen, or something that we say, here's how we really want to dig into this as a district priority.
That'd be great. I just knew it was in our current plan, so I just wanted to make sure that it was. Thank you.
Yep. So I have two things. So tell me if you feel like they're captured. So on the, one that's on here, the study, it said, study the timing of interventions on student continuum. And that was regarding that ELA and math assessment results at all grade levels. So I don't know if that is, it's not listed on here, but I'm assuming-
I might have missed that one.
So one thing that we're really looking at this year, and I said it goes back, we used to have district pre- and post-assessments at all grade levels, and we moved away from that. So we're really looking at, what currently are we using across the district? So at elementary with our collaborative literacy, what are we using built into that that we can measure and gather the data at district level? Because right now, they're giving the assessments out in the buildings, but we're not gathering that information. So we're really looking at what, for reading and math, K through eight, can we use to gather that information for that continuous improvement cycle, so we can disaggregate that? So Nicole, and Demi, and Linda and I are working on that piece of that, along with, you know, teams of people.
Sure.
And then at high school, we have district semester tests, that we gather that information twice a year. So that's that continuous cycle of improvement. So once we create that and gather it, then we can really examine by standard how our students are doing, to see where are our bright spots. If I can look to you and say, my gosh, your classroom far exceeded how many, what are you doing differently? So we can gather that information, or here's an area, and how do we support it?
Okay. And so then I was just curious, because I know I feel like we had talked about this before, maybe using math, you know, like last year, we didn't have our state assessments to look at. So do we not use the state assessments as heavily, and maybe use maps when we know that we're doing it authentically and with integrity? Do we use map scores? And then do we not just compare ourselves to the state, but to other districts our size, or with our demographics, or whatever, just to get a different picture? So that was just something I wrote on that side. And then the other one, and this might go along with yours, but district-wide study of the student assistance teams-
Oh.
From that behavioral stuff.
Yep, that fits all within those processes and the realignment of the behavior programs, because all of that is how those supports are monitored and put into place. That student assistance team is one of the mechanisms for noting what's happening as we put interventions in place, and then what does that tell us? Does that keep a student out of special ed? Does that indicate that they need to have an assessment that determines if they need formal special ed services? And it's the systems right now for how that happens with consistency building-wide. So that's a piece contained in there, and would be something that's part of that bigger picture.
Okay. I think those are the ones I had.
And they did have that set to start that study right by the beginning of the fourth quarter, depending on COVID had a group ready.
Around March 13th of '17.
Yeah, so she had a group ready and prepared to be able to start that. Now she's obviously helped it off till this year, and she and I have been in conversation, I with Dr. Staden as well, as we're looking at the overall behavior piece of that, because the system seemed to have a lot of that at the building level with the tier one and two. How do we fold that into the larger effort going forward to rebound that potentially at tier one, two, three, and four?
In some ways, it's good that they didn't do that, and I- In some ways, it's good that they didn't do that in isolation, and then now kind of with a bigger focus. But it's definitely a piece of that. And it fits into the academic piece, too, because of the need for really being clear with our formative benchmarking kinds of assessments, because that's what goes right into SAP teams' decision-making process when they're looking at the information they have. So it's all connected.
Yeah, my other Wilson and I have put together all the tier one, two, and three programming for Dr. Staben, and I'd ask Patty right now to hold, because she has that group ready to start again now in January, with SAT study, just to hold to see how we want to make sure we meld all that together.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. What do we have? What's it for? How's it doing? Where is it? Who's there? All of that. How many kids? A good spreadsheet that they put together.
It's a huge spreadsheet.
Yeah.
But we stopped it twice now, just, so you're absolutely right. It was on there, and it has not been completed yet, and we're not sure whether we should start right away in January or wait until we fold it in.
Sure. That makes sense. Thank you.
Good. Such good thinking. Doug is also working on some planning for next year, just with people's ability to use some of the tools that we have more effectively, to vision their data. Do you want to talk about that a little bit?
Well, we collect lots of data, right? So it's how we sort of bring it to life. So we've been on a journey with Tableau, trying to bring data from different sources, so that, you know, our eventual goal is to get down to the teacher level. Because if you just think of something like the online school, right? We have, you know, Calvert and ExactPath is our curriculum, and they have tools to measure it, but it sits outside, right? And so trying to bring that to one place, and mentum, and all these things. So the key is that we've been on a journey to build a data warehouse, if you will, that we can then take all that information that goes in there and make it, you know, visible, usable by the teacher ultimately is where we're going, and the principal level, the school level, on up to the district level. So that's kind of what we've been, we've been working on. And, you know, you guys are, you know, we use Tableau for, we used it for COVID tracking. We used it for the boundary process, all those, you know, those visuals. And we use it for map, you know, looking at map test views and stuff. So we just keep working to try to build that out and try to make sense of our data, because we have a lot of it. But the key is, how do we sort of, in a visual sense, you know, bring it to life? Looking for outliers, so, you know, something we're kind of working on an early warning system now. So how do we take certain indicators and rank them, and then look at kids that are at risk? And, you know, so we can make sure that we're getting them the help that they need, re-engage them, things like that. So it's, the effort is really to be more proactive and less reactive. You know, things like looking at a state assessment, you know, in six months after it's been taken, we're into the next school year, doesn't do us a whole lot of good, right? It might be a benchmark, but we need to find more immediate things that can make sense to the classroom. So trying to bring behaviors, attendance, test scores, all those things into visually.
Curious, when Dr. Staben was explaining a little bit about that to me in our last one-on-one, is there a way to track that by household, too, to see if there's specific indicators? It's not just that student, too, to see if there's something we need to be bringing in with other partners with as well?
Yeah, I mean, all that's accessible. We have, you know, and within our data warehouse, infinite campus, it's, you can look at by household. You can look at all those types of things. So it's really, it's really trying to narrow it down to what it is that we, that's impactful that we want to see, right? So those types of things are, trying to work through all those to say, oh, these are really the five things. And if I look at these for a kid in sixth grade, I know that they're at risk from graduating, right? Those types of proactive things that we can do in the district.
And making sure people aren't setting up their own rogue systems for how they're monitoring some of that. We've got some redundancies that we need to correct.
So all that information is going to the great place, making sure all the buildings are.
Yeah, trying to get some consistency among buildings. Because when you don't have that, buildings, you know, through their, I would say, that's one. A lot of buildings innovate in a way that they develop things for their own use, but then they're not shared. So, you know, I was out in LBA yesterday, sitting with Wade, right? And he might have something that he developed to track us that nobody else is using, right? It's very innovative, but, you know, how do I take some best practices and move them across the district so that we can all use them? So that's kind of been what we've been working on, you know, over the last, it's really been a couple-year journey, but we just keep trying to evolve it.
Yeah. No, that was one of the things that I had written in regarding like our AP score, or sorry, ACT testing, is I think we should continue to monitor it. But the work that needs to be done to get us to the point of increasing the ACT scores happens long before, right, this, you know? And so, yes, let's look at it, and let's continue to encourage that. But not that I don't want to spend a lot of time on that, but the time you spend is on the third-grade reading and writing and math, and, you know what I mean? So I think there's important things that we need to look at, but maybe we need to just make sure we're allocating our time appropriately, so that we can look at those and say, wow, the number of kids who took ACT, here are the things that we can attribute to them potentially scoring a 25 or higher, or whatever the score is, you know? And then we can encourage those things earlier on, and hope to get the same or better results, you know? And so I think changing how we're looking at some of the things would make a big difference. And maybe, you know, people will get more creative about that, and it'll make more sense, more of a vision, versus, you know, my daughter's taking the ACT today, and she's on a wing and a prayer, she's hoping she does her best, you know what I mean? But like, there's nothing I could have done to do differently today.
Right. So what are those five indicators? What's the relevancy?
Right.
You know, I mean, if schools really, truly are moving away from, you know, collecting ACT or SAT scores, you know?
You're exactly right.
Well, and on mine, I had written, too, regarding looking at our AP stuff. And do we need to maybe look at AP and what's our participation? But what's also our participation in dual credit?
Right.
Because, you know, when I look at it for my daughter, some of them, I'm like, well, I don't want you to take that one, because you can take dual credit and get this, and I can look on the website of this university, and I know you're going to get credit. So there, I think they're both valuable, and they both offer their, you know, they offer what students need. But I don't want to push people in a certain way, when maybe there is something else that made more sense for that student. And I think they're both challenging. They're both career readiness, college readiness. And so how can we maybe look at both of those as measures? To say, let's try to increase our numbers of, and that will obviously help us get students into those career cluster classes out at CTE, knowing that maybe they want to continue on to Southeast Tech, or maybe they want to take their credits with them and go to, you know, get a two-year degree, or a four-year degree, or whatever. So I feel like there's different ways we can look at those things that will actually change behaviors of students that we haven't been doing in the past.
It comes back to, how does this help me?
Right.
And what does this get? What is this going to do for me? Is it just so I can finish the trajectory of my high school diploma?
Right.
Or is it also a benefit because it's shown to be true? If I take this progression of courses, I will statistically be more likely to do better on my ACT?
Right.
Or I can get into this program that I aspire to, because I got interested in seventh and eighth grade, or whatever that looks like. If we do those right things over time, and we help build the coherence, the right things will happen.
And that's why it's so important, because we do have the focus groups. Whatever plan we do is looking at those metrics and making sure we might need to change all of them on how we look at them, like I talked at the work session, that, you know.
But they live over here, and those are our enduring commitments. And then it's the rigor that we have in our courses, and making sure that kids can access the courses, and they have opportunity at any of our high schools to access those things. And there's not something that limits or accelerates differently for that standard quality of care that we want to make sure we give to every student. Yeah. Great, great thoughts. Okay. Madam President, do you want to call a short recess?
Should we have a short recess? What time is it? 2:40, should we? 10 minutes?
Yep. And then we'll talk about the how. All right. So the next big thing is how we're going to do some of our listening forums. So I put just a couple of models up. We can have combinations or versions of things that you've seen, things that you've done in the past that I don't know about. But essentially, the first model is that task force kind of a model. I think you use something very similar with the boundaries process, where you have full group and small group work. And the model that I've used is the small, the large and the smaller groups are kind of co-led by a community member and a staff member. And then typically, there are four to five meetings. You start in the whole group, you move to the small groups, and then they're kind of laid out by those five meetings there, what you do. And then ultimately, that group brings a set of recommendations to the board, or these are things that kind of came out of our conversations, that we would recommend the board considers having as part of the priorities. So here's kind of the model of that. And this is a model where those small groups are broken out by topic. So you might have an academic topic, you might have technology and innovation, facilities, special programs, or choice programs, however you want to do those, but they're typically topic-specific. And so that group interacts around that topic on all of those nights. You have, if you go back to this one, you've got meeting one is where you get an introduction of kind of what's currently happening, what might be coming from the latest strategic plan. And then you pose some questions related to the things that we've talked about, have discussions. It's kind of that structured feedback. That fourth meeting is summarizing, okay, group, this is what we've said the last three nights. Are we accurate? Might involve a little bit of work between meetings, but then ultimately, on that fifth meeting, everybody kind of takes a look at what's borne out from those groups. Then the second one is what we've talked about, and could be kind of part of that first model, but this is more of that world or community, some people call them café models, where we would probably have an outside facilitator who is an expert in running that model. We have multiple dates, and we could designate, you know, on one night, it's a world café with staff. It might be just elementary parents, could be middle-level. I mean, you could do it however you want to do it for the groups that you call in. Could be by area, where we do a community café in the southwest, and the northwest, or whatever. And then they're really designed to be conversational groups. It's a structured conversation, and we can have multiple topics. So you might have three or four rounds with a group on a particular night, where they spend time on one topic, then they switch topics. And then if you do the model kind of like it's intended, people move around with their location. One person stays fixed at that table, the rest kind of move on, and then they talk about what the group before them talked about, if you do it on a single topic. So you can kind of, you know, do this however you want to, but it's small group, it's feedback, more than recommendation. And so you gather all that feedback and say, here's what this world café told you on a particular meeting date. And then I just said, you can also do a combination. You can have a task force that maybe presents recommendations, and you take those out to a world café kind of a model. You can do those internally, we would need to do that no matter what. Maybe externally, it could be a follow-up to the task force, or it could be in preparation of the task force. But then ultimately, you kind of have to synthesize and confirm what it is that you heard, and then move that into the next phase, which, of course, becomes in those priorities. And then, of course, the big consideration for all of this is, do we plan it so we think we can do it in person? Or does it need to be virtually? So I think those are, you know, the big considerations, and then it's the timeline. You know, when do we really want to try and get these scheduled? Is it a January, February? The groups get together, we synthesize March and April, May we have a final draft, and ready to go in July and August? And I just threw that out there as sample. So I'm happy to hear from you what you think would work. Is it combination? Is it realistic? You know, what do we think we can get people to attend to? We know we have to have, you know, voices from throughout. It's got to be staff, we want students involved, it's got to be community parent. But how we do that in light of COVID is a little trickier. So I'll open it up. What do you think?
I think the combo method is basically what we almost did this time, because we did have the task force, and then Dr. Maher did the community meetings with the, that were Zoomed, or call-in. I think that we had a moderator online that did that. So I'm not advocating either way, but I feel like we kind of did that once before, and it worked well. I do, in my, what's important to me would be that we make sure we have all the input, you mentioned both from staff, students, and family, at a level. And B, we do offer opportunities both for in-person and virtual attendance by the public, because in this, especially with looking, if we go with a time like that, we still are not outside COVID. So I think that those are the, for me, besides that, it's not as important, but that if we have those two things, those are fine.
One thing I want to just tease out with you on that is, I think what was hard, I finished up a facilities task force, we met in person, and we finished it, but it was everybody online. What was hard for us is when we tried to do both at the same time. So how do you feel about, if you want to do the online version, come at this time? If you want to do the online version, or in-person, come here. If you want to do online, it's here, as opposed to somebody sitting with a camera, trying to capture the live thing at the same time?
I think that makes sense, because I agree, just even when I zoomed in on Wednesday, it's hard to capture all of it. So I think it would be better, but yet, when we called in on those task force community meetings, it was very clear to me. I could hear well, I could, it was very much whatever. So I think it is, as long as we're doing both, that they are, but they are held separately, so that they can be best utilized.
Where is it going to be held next?
We haven't decided yet.
Well, I mean, I personally would be fine with them all being virtual at this point. I mean, I don't, you know, we're not going to see, I just don't know how effective you can be with having spaced-out people at tables, et cetera, et cetera.
For discussion purposes.
Right.
The person that I've talked to is a potential facilitator, is not locked in. It's somebody who's done this model a lot online, so they're very experienced at it. I'm, you know, I can do a Zoom meeting, but I'm not good yet at breaking people out into groups, and, you know, managing what they're doing in groups, and bringing them back together. And so I think for these purposes, if we wanted to think about it being primarily online, I think we could talk with that person, or whoever we have facilitated, and say, do you recommend doing this by topic? Do you recommend we do it by level? Do we recommend we do internal and then external? You know, what's kind of their recommendation, based on what's happened? One thing that's interesting, when you're nice blended groups, it can work really well. There's kind of a nice synergy about people who know a little bit more, and people who don't know much, and sharing information while you're also kind of projecting forward. But it can also be hard online, because while you're trying to get other people up to speed, there's a portion of your community group that doesn't have a clue, or you're trying to get them up to speed, but people who already know, or maybe they've been on past focus groups, or they were involved with the first round of the strategic plan. It's what you talked about, kind of that differentiated version. So how do you account for kind of not wasting people's time, but also giving them good information upfront that they may not have yet? I don't know, I'm just kind of thinking about the dynamics of how you use your time when you know your attention span is different in an online meeting versus what you can probably do when you're together in person a little bit more.
They took a three-part class for, and one lady did what you said, that you could, she could break us out.
Yeah.
So then you've got six people, and it was amazing how much after.